Yeah. Good evening everybody, good evening board members. I hope you enjoyed the day it was kind of nice out. This meeting is being, this meeting held in Rosa Parks School Auditorium is an open session of the Rosa Parks Board of Education, held under the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, local sources, the home news Tribune, the borough clerk, school offices and the district website. Rule call please.
President Holmes?
Here.
Mr. President Biemonte?
Here.
Susan Carston?
Here.
Lucy Figurido?
Here.
Dr. Brittany Kirkman?
Here.
Cindy Maggo? Jennifer McCarran?
Here.
Chris Monroe?
Here.
Constance Quintella?
Okay we have a quorum please rise to the flag, select.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let it be resolved that the Rosa Parks Board of Education meeting hereby convenes to the executive session for the discussion of the following subjects: personnel and attorney-client privilege. It is anticipated that the executive session will take approximately sixty minutes. The board may take action during public session. The board shall return to public session following executive session at approximately seven P M. The minutes of the executive session shall be released to the public when the reason for the executive session is no longer exist. Do you have a motion to go in the executive?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in executive thank you.
For what, restroom? I don't, uh, I don't, it's gonna be too tight.
Can I have a motion to go back into open?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to everybody in the audience. And we will begin with our agenda. At this time, I will open up the public portion for agenda items only. You can come up, please state your name and where you're from. And you have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public portion. Thank you. At this time... Who are we recognizing?
Middle school.
Oh, middle school, Ms. Coys. Okay. At this time, we are gonna have the principal of middle school, Ms. Coys, please come. Recognize your students. Holy moly.
Good evening, everyone, board members, parents, students, and families. I am very happy to be here with you today to showcase some of our best students and recognize some outstanding work that we have done this year at the middle school. As you know, our motto is Panthers Have Pride. Each of our letters stands for one of the encouraging words that we guide our students. This year, at the middle school, we have renewed the focus on increasing Panther pride by infusing lessons about our five core values. With perseverance, students will learn to persist despite difficulty or delay in achieving success. Through respect, students will learn to have respect and regard for others and their property. With integrity, students will learn to be honest and hold strong moral principles. With determination, students will learn to set goals and establish a purpose. With excellence, students will recognize to strive to be a better student and person who grows from challenges. The students being recognized tonight have stood out this year for exemplifying our core values.
So the first students that we will recognize are for perseverance. First, we would like to recognize Alfred Chen. Alfred has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating perseverance. He showed he is a student who does not give up when working with his group to design a mousetrap this year to automatically stop at nineteen feet. He showed tremendous leadership skills and care for success outside of the classroom. Due to his great determination, he has been successful and he should be recognized for his work ethic and persistence and perseverance. So Alfred. The second student is Juliana Luciano, who also demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating perseverance. She's a student who never wants to stop going the extra distance. With her photography work this year, she strives to produce the highest quality possible. She learned new software and persevered to make the edits she wanted for her final projects. The amount of effort put forth outside of the classroom showed the motivation and pride that she has for her work, which should also be recognized for perseverance. Juliana?
Our next student, Hala, has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating perseverance. Hala has worked hard this year by following directions, playing carefully, leaving space for others, and she hasn't given up on improving with her studies and the way she conducts herself here at the Roselle Park Middle School. We are very proud of Hala's growth this school year. Hala?
And now we move on to our students that have demonstrated respect. The first student is Anthony Molinaro. Anthony has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating respect. Anthony has stood out to many of the staff and faculty at Roselle Park Middle School by being aware of others and their needs, using kind words, being a friend to those in need, and always being inclusive of others. We are very proud of Anthony's consistent ability to be kind and compassionate. So Anthony? The next one is Noah Silva. Noah has also demonstrated pride by demonstrating respect. He shows respect and kindness to all students. He is inclusive to students with various needs and abilities. Noah is compassionate, empathetic, and helpful to those in need. We are very proud of Noah's maturity in situations that may be new or difficult. Noah?
Still with respect, Jaden Cole. Jaden has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating respect. Jaden is always eager to help her teachers when needed and follows through on tasks that she is asked to complete. Jaden? Jaden? Our next student is Lucia, which has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating respect. Lucia is being recognized for demonstrating empathy and being aware of both students and staff members' feelings throughout the school day. Lucia Winery.
We move on to integrity. We recognize Gracie Booth, who has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating integrity. Gracie goes out of her way to make people smile, whether she knows them or not. She does not hesitate to lend a helping hand and is always a reliable student in all situations. Gracie?
Determination. Shane has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating determination. Shane has worked hard this year, following the rules, being a friend, walking in the hallways, and especially taking care of his classroom and things. Shane works extremely hard and to the best of his ability on all of his assignments. We are so very proud of Shane's work ethic. Shane Kalibo.
And now we move on to excellence. We recognize Jaden, who has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating excellence. Jaden is being recognized for demonstrating kindness and helping students in every grade feel included. Jaden works hard and balances the rigor of school responsibilities as vice president of the Council of Ten and participates in sports and extracurricular activities. Jaden Franco. We also recognize Maxwell, who has demonstrated pride through demonstrating excellence. As the Middle School Student Council President, Maxwell is a great leader for our school, middle school students. He demonstrates responsibility, empathy, and compassion towards his peers and his teachers throughout the school day. Maxwell Griffin.
Alexandra V. Alexandra has demonstrated Panther pride by demonstrating excellence. Alexandra is being recognized because she has demonstrated two dedication in leadership in her day-to-day interactions with her peers, as well as students in sixth and seventh grade. Aside from excelling academically, Alexandra has eagerly participated in community service events sponsored by our chapter of the National Junior Honor Society and has participated in community service outside of the school setting. Alexandra V.
And now we recognize a group of students who tonight we'd like to commend and recognize these students for demonstrating their tireless efforts to be leaders of our school, serving their community, and always willing to lend a helping hand while balancing schoolwork and excelling academically. They represent all five pillars of the Honor Society, which includes scholarship, leadership, service, character, and citizenship. They have participated in various activities such as the Jared Box, which is an annual event where students collect and decorate boxes filled with items for hospitalized children. This year, we delivered over sixty boxes to Bristol Myers Squibb Children's Hospital in New Brunswick. They've also taken part in the fall and spring Roselle Park Community Cleanup through the Cassano Center, all under the supervision of our advisors, Ms. Mauer and Ms. Carrie Lynch. All of these students have demonstrated Panther pride through their excellence this year. First, we recognize Ethan Palma. Layal El Sangari. Gianna Bayamonte. Isabella McGowan. Nadia Odat. Amelia Diaz. Victoria Gayet. And Sophia Nieto Soto.
As part of our work to increase ownership of the Panther pride values, all our staff and students have participated in advisory groups during the spring marking periods. Topics discussed with students have included what we have in common, understanding respect, developing empathy. Future topics include building an academic mindset, developing grit, and taking responsibility for learning. The goal of the advisory period is to increase positive student interactions while also developing individual students' understanding of characteristics to help foster a positive community. It is our goal to continue promoting positive relationships and increasing understanding of positive social skills. So tonight, I am very proud to honor some of our best of the best. Though all of our students at the middle school are the best, these are their peers who identify what the middle school is all about. So congratulations to all of you.
Again, congratulations to all the middle school students that show the pride of their of their school and what the Panther pride means to them. At this time, I'm gonna take a couple of minute break. So the students, if they want to go home, do some homework, or just go outside, we're gonna give you a few minutes to walk out the door. Okay? Thank you, just a few minutes. Thank you. At this time, I will go into any committee reports.
Yes, President Harms, I do have a report for Robert Gordon PTA as their liaison. I want to congratulate Jennifer Raze as their new president. And also, a very successful event was the Neon Party, which was a couple of weeks ago. We look forward to more events. I missed that one, but I hope I can attend another one. And there's a lot of fundraisers coming up, including one, I believe, this week that's going on for plant, plant sales. So we hope that people can participate. And on their Facebook page has all the events upcoming from now until the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yes, President Harms. The next Aldine PTO meeting will be this coming Monday at seven PM. I want to first thank everybody that came out to the professional wrestling event at the high school this past weekend. It was a lot of fun. I was able to put on my stripes again for the first time in two years, and I can't wait to do it again sometime, hopefully, next year when we do it again. The money was raised for the class of 2024. I want to also, before I close out, send my condolences to Roselle for the recent tragic loss of Keisha and Kelsey Morrison. My prayers are with them and continue to feel for their loss. And lastly, I want to, you know, give a big, big, big shout out to all the moms out here for Happy Mother's Day this coming weekend. And, you know, definitely, if you still have your mom in your life, definitely cherish it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
President Harms, I have a report. I wanted to give an update on the last New Jersey School Board Association meeting. Well, specifically, there were numerous updates, but one in particular is that there are two school districts that have filed a lawsuit against social media platforms. And so they are asking for other school districts who are interested in joining that, in joining that cause. So I did reach out to get some more information about exactly what that entails, and so that this way I can share it with the rest of the board to make a decision if we want to be a part of that. And then also, I just wanted to give a reminder that the next Sherman PTA meeting is on May fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee report? Here, you know, we'll move on to the superintendent's review. Mr. Garino.
Thank you, President Harms. Good evening, everyone. Before I introduce our anti-bullying coordinator, Ms. Carruga, I would like to take the time to recognize our wonderful teaching staff on Teacher Appreciation Week. This is Teacher Appreciation Day, actually, today, and thank them for all of the work that they do all year long. They certainly deserve a whole week. They probably deserve a whole year. So congratulations and thank you for your service to Roselle Park students. Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to call up our new anti-bullying coordinator. As you know, Mrs. Becker, who has been the anti-bullying coordinator for several years, is retiring in August. So she had to pass the torch over to a new anti-bullying coordinator, and that is our assistant principal at the middle school, Ms. Michelle Carruga, who's coming up to report on the anti-bullying investigations, training, and programs, as well as review of the official grade report for the 2122 school self-assessment as required by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Ms. Carruga?
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, board members. Good evening. As per the New Jersey Department of Education, schools are required to submit student safety information twice a year to the NJDOE. Additionally, as the anti-bullying coordinator for the district, it is my responsibility to specifically report harassment, intimidation, and bullying data to the Board of Education. This report is for the reporting period of September first through December thirty-first of 2022. Each school in the district has their own anti-bullying specialists, who, along with their principals, address harassment, intimidation, and bullying concerns in their building and conduct investigations as required. The anti-bullying specialists are Andrea Cosadoi at the high school, Chelsea Murphy at the middle school, Deena Miwad at Robert Gordon, Caroline Gleason at Aldine, and Jamie Halpern at Sherman. For this reporting period, there were a total of ten investigations initiated as possible cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. After a thorough investigation, it was determined that one out of the ten cases met the criteria as set forth by the New Jersey Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. At the high school, there were, there were five cases conducted or investigated and came out to be alleged. At the middle school, three cases were investigated, which also resulted in alleged. At Robert Gordon, there was one case investigated, which the result was alleged as well. At Aldine, there were no investigations during this time period, and at Sherman, there was one confirmed case. Consequences for the offenders vary according to the ages and the circumstances of each situation. Our goal is to always use situations as learning experiences, so counseling for an offender, or sometimes the victim, may be required. Additional consequences may include parent conferences, education on the district harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, schedule changes, detentions, in- or out-of-school detention, suspension, student monitoring by a staff member, and/or police involvement as warranted. During this reporting period, we also conducted the following programs at each of our schools. At the high school, they held the Chalk It Up to Respect Partnership for Change, the Power Back Forum, Dating Violence Club, classroom lessons on harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and the Stall Ledger, a newspaper with HIV resources for students. At the middle school, social emotional lessons were held on name-calling. We also celebrated Red Ribbon Week, Social Violence, School Violence Awareness and Peace Week. PBIS assemblies were held, as well as the New Student Orientation. At Robert Gordon, they conducted programs including Gratitude Grams, Holiday Seasons, the Did You Know Cultural Awareness Series, the Heritage Project, and the Bucket Filler's Program. At Aldine, programs included Friendship Counseling Lessons, SEL After-School Enrichment Program, Respect Counseling Lessons, Start With Hello Week, Hispanic Heritage Month Activities, the Safety Patrol, as well as morning meetings. At Sherman, they conducted harassment, intimidation, and bullying lessons for fourth and fifth graders, SEL, Social Skills Lessons, morning meetings, Start With Hello Week, Hispanic Heritage Month Lessons, and Safety Assemblies. The goal of our anti-bullying specialists, school safety teams, and principals is to continue to create schools with positive and accepting environments where all members of the school community feel safe and supported. In addition, another responsibility as the anti-bullying coordinator is to present the self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act as required by the NJDOE. These scores were previously presented to and approved by the Board of Education at the October 2022 board meeting. The NJDOE recently approved and released those official scores, which have now been posted on our district webpage for public review. The self-assessment is a rubric completed for each school to help assess how well they are meeting the responsibilities and requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. The schools use the results to focus their efforts and resources to address bullying concerns and to continue to foster positive school climates in their buildings. During the upcoming school year, we will continue to conscientiously implement the requirements of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, and we will continue to provide programs that promote and foster positive school climates. positive school climates that we have strived to grow in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As we'll move on to the agenda, under Personnel Items, Agenda Items 1 through 10. 1. Staff Resignation. 2. Sick Bank Request. 3. Substitute Teacher. 4. Fall 2023 Sports Physical Personnel. 5. Maternity Leave Absent Extension. 6. First HCPR AED Training. 7. Summer Camp Staffing List. 8. Field Trip Approval to the Rozelle Park High School. 9. 2023 Additional Child Study Team Personnel. And 10. Staff Appointment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second? Any discussion on any item? Roll call, please.
Vice President Biamante?
Yes.
Susan Carstone?
Yes.
Lucy Figueroa?
Yes.
Dr. Brittany Kirkland?
Yes.
Cindy Mago? I'm sorry. Jennifer McCarr?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
President Harms?
Yes. Motion carries. Under Education, Agenda Items 11 through 14 and Addenda Item 1. 11. Standard Field Trips. 12. Harassment Intimidation, Intimidation Bullying Incidents. 13. Education Programs. 14. Additional Extended School Year 2023 Staff. And Addenda Item 1, Conference Attendance Request. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a second?
Second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Biamante? Susan Carstone?
Yes.
Lucy Figueroa?
Yes.
Dr. Brittany Kirkland? Jennifer McCarr?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
President Harms?
Yes. Motion carries. Under Business, Agenda Items 15 through 31 and Addenda Items 2 through 5. 15. Monthly Certification, Certifications. 16. Approval of Bills. 17. Approval of Minutes. 18. Secretary Treasury, Treasurers Report. 19. 2023, 2024 School Lunch Prices. 20. Professional Services Contract 2023, 2024. 21. Use of Buildings and Grounds. 22. In Sport, In Su, In Support of S-3203 slash A-4835 Bill, Which Permit to Holder of a Type S School Bus Certificate, Certificate to Operate a Type S School Bus to Transport Children and to and from school without obtaining a commercial driver's license. 23. Approval of New York Life's Voluntary Guaranteed Issue Life Insurance Program. 24. Approval of Colonial Life's Voluntary Guaranteed Issue Short-Term Disability Insurance Program. 25. Professional Services Contract 2023, 2024. 26. Revised Tuition Contract 2022, 2023. 27. Reverse Auction of Equipment Supplies. 28. Intern Affiliation Agreement. 29. District Contracts for 2023, 2024. 30. District Contracts Agreements. Addenda Items 1. Conference Attendance Request. 2. Use of Buildings and Grounds. 3. Approval of the Adoption of a Tax Levy Schedule. 4. Professional Services Contract Revision. And 5. District Contracts Agreement and Revisions. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a, a, um... Any, any discussion? I lost the word. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice President Biamante?
Yes.
Susan Carstone?
Yes to everything except 25A.
Lucy Figueroa?
Yes.
Dr. Brittany Kirkland?
Yes to, yes with a no to 25A.
Jennifer McCarr?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes, abstaining from 25A.
President Harms?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, hey. We will move on to continuing business. Do we have any continuing business? Do we have any new business? We are moving to the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. I'm sorry, your name and where you're from. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Kathleen Paiva. Can you hear me? 124 Union Road. I'm here again in support for Mrs. Hanau, the Robert Gordon School Principal. If any board member plans to seek out with others to conspire to ruin the life and career of a well-respected, loved principal, it's 100% unacceptable, unethical, and just plain wrong. Two members had a parent send multiple complaints to the superintendent to back their own agenda. One member has a relative on the PTA E-Board who is also a staff member, showing a conflict of interest. One parent has a very close relationship with a member on the board that appears to be trying to influence because they were unhappy with their own experience. Also, a committee was changed, which appears to the public, it could have an influence by putting specific people in a place to vote out the principal. Now, Mrs. Hanau has had an exemplary performance record, no disciplinary action, which meets the tenure requirements. Effectively increased reading levels for at least 58 kids in six months, eliminated the 10% to 20% achievement gap that existed for years between the 3rd and 5th grade students, increased parent and student engagement by over 50%. Robert Gordon events have a massive turnout now compared to when both of my kids were in Robert Gordon School. Teachers, parents, and students do support Mrs. Hanau. She obtained new grants for the school, and under her leadership, they celebrated the Week of the Young Child and was on the cover of the Rozelle Park Monthly Paper, May 2023 edition. And on May 5th, last Friday, Principal Hanau received the Distinguished New Jersey Diversity in Education Award. Per their email, "Congrats, Principal Hanau, and your district on leading the New Jersey initiative in diversifying your team and providing students with educators and programs that encourage overall success. Not only has the school and families overcome the pandemic in a successful manner, but they continue to grow in academics and connectivity. We are proud to see growth with test scores and community morale. I feel it's unethical to follow through with the blatant disregard for Principal Hanau's performance, achievements, and success due to personal reasons by a few disgruntled people. The decision to not consider her for tenure is not being made from a professional standpoint, and there is no justification, and there is a lack of transparency on what is going on, including backdoor handshake deals." I feel that due to personal relationships and conflicts of interest, I would like to request that Ms. Quintella, Ms. Mago, and Mr. Biamante recuse themselves from the tenure vote for Mrs. Hanau, and the board hand down a 100% yes vote for her tenure at the June Board of Ed Meeting. I only have a few seconds left, but I wanted to also add on in regards to Ms. McCarr. I don't have a, a lot of time, but I would like the board to possibly open an ethics review for her LGBTQ, anti-LGBTQ social media posts, because as a board member, you should represent all the children in the district. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Mrs. Perez, Rozelle Park, New Jersey. I want to say thank you for coming out to support the events. I've seen a lot of you at Robert Gordon, and I'm so happy that you have been able to come out. I also wanted to wish all the moms here a Happy Mother's Day. It's not an easy job, and teaching and mothering is one in the same sometimes. A friendly reminder that our Robert Gordon garden will be in the front, near the school, by the teacher bench. We will be developing a pollinator garden. May 22nd, we get our builds, and May 24th, we'll be planting. So please stop by if you're going for a walk. If you are interested in being part of the summer maintenance team, please email me at rparedes@rpsd.org. Also, we have a parent workshop tomorrow at the Cassano Center at 6:30, I want to say. Ms. Pfeiffer and I will be presenting summer learning activities for our little learners, so please come out and check us out, or come hang out and ask some questions. Tomorrow's Nurses Day, so please send some good vibes to our nurses. It's been serious the last couple, couple of years, but we love them very much. Spring Concert for Robert Gordon will be at the middle school, 6:00 PM. And plant sale, like you mentioned, will be the 11th and the 12th.
Hi, my name is Lita Thai, and I'm from Cranford, New Jersey. And I came here to advocate for my fellow colleague, Elise Hanau, and for the children and families of Rozelle Park, even though I'm not a resident. I've been an educator for over 25 years, and I sit in a district-level position. I understand very well what it means to make decisions that sometimes do not make people happy. We, as educators, have to make those decisions with what's best for children first, always, and what's good for the community. I have known Rozelle Park for a long time. I grew up in Elizabeth, and I've always known it to be such a beautiful, wonderful town. But I got to tell you, I came out, out of my long schedule to come and speak to you all because I cannot believe that this would possibly be happening. And honestly, Ms. Hanau is wonderful and has many accomplishments, as, as this individual just said before. And she will be fine, okay? She'll be fine, because any school district's going to pick her up because she is so intelligent, has such a big heart, and she knows what's right for kids. This is bigger than that. The facts are, is that Robin Gordon has not been performing well for a long time. All you got to do is go on NJDOE to know that. That is fact, okay? It is also fact that Robin Gordon has had over five different principals in the last 10 years. That is fact, okay? That's not anybody's opinion. That is fact. In order for you folks to really see some long-lasting change in that school, you need to maintain someone there that's willing to do the work. Change takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. And as you all know, we suffered such a traumatic situation with the pandemic that these accomplishments that this woman has been able to do despite everything that has happened is pretty amazing. Don't make these decisions over what a few people think or don't think. It's about the kids. This is a community. And even, let me take it further than that. Like, who's going to want to invest and move into a town who doesn't have a good school system? Okay? Because anybody that comes to me and says to me, "Oh, you know, I'm moving to New Jersey. I want to go to Union County. What do you think of Cranford? What'd you think of Mountaintide?" I said, "Go, go on the Board of Education and look at their scores. Talk to people." I mean, think about your own pride in your community. And don't let just a few people who seem to own the town speak for everybody else here. Thank you. Please consider that. Thank you.
Sofia Pinto, 619 Elm Street. I want to thank all of the teachers, staff, and leadership at Robert Gordon for the incredible work they do each day. Last week, the Robert Gordon PTA celebrated them during our Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. We can't thank them enough for all that they do. Under the leadership of Principal Hanau, there have been many accomplishments. I want to highlight two major curriculum initiatives that have been implemented to better serve the needs of each child. First, they implemented Win Time, which stands for What I Need, a 30-minute period each day for kindergarten through 3rd grades as a way to provide children with the individualized learning they need. Utilizing assessment data available, teachers use this time to provide additional activities to help or challenge each child based on what that specific child needs. This structured and organized approach to school planning allows for better use of school and district resources, effective collaboration between the school and curriculum office, and most importantly, more specific learning for each child. Mrs. Hanau, along with the teachers and staff, has also implemented the district's multi-tiered systems of support derived from a manual that a consultant created for the district, paid for by the district. Robert Gordon is working hard to serve as an example of how best practices can be implemented in an effective way to lead to better outcomes for our children, children who, by the way, come from ve, very diverse economic and cultural backgrounds. I want to congratulate Mrs. Hanau and the entire Robert Gordon community, including our amazing parents, on being honored with a New Jersey Diversity in Education Award, as well as with the NJPTA President's Recognition Award. Two honors that reflect the collaboration, hard work, commitment, and dedication from Mrs. Hanau, Robert Gordon teachers and staff, parents, and the entire Robert Gordon community. I look forward to the continued efforts by all in supporting Mrs. Hanau and Robert Gordon for the duration of this school year and beyond. I want to conclude by saying that I appreciate Mrs. Hanau as our school principal. She is incredibly knowledgeable, but most importantly, she cares. She cares about our students, our families, teachers, and staff. I hope that every board member will make it their mission to take the opportunity to actually get to know her and the incredible work that she and the entire Robert Gordon team are doing. Thank you.
My name is Melinda Muka, and I live in Rozelle Park. I've lived here for 35 years, and my daughter attended the Robert Gordon School. I know how important good schools are, good schools that have respected teachers and principals with integrity, who care about the well-being of every single child in their school. From what I've seen and heard tonight, and from parents across the community, Mrs. Hanau is one such principal. She gets nothing but accolades and support and the love of the students and the parents of Robert Gordon. She's awarded prestigious, um, awards across the, the board. She's brought excellence to the Robert Gordon School and to Rozelle Park. And I'd like to echo what was previously said, that schools matter to a community. People will not move into a community whose schools are not good and where petty self-interest rules the actions of a school board. I cannot think of any conceivable valid reason why her contract should not be renewed and tenure granted. If it is, then I applaud the members of the Board of Education for acting in the best possible interests of the students, the teachers, the principal, and the community of Rozelle Park. If not, then the board has to provide an open, honest, straightforward, transparent reason based on absolute valid reasons. The residents of Rozelle Park and the parents of the Robert Gordon School deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michaelan Regan, 134 Sheridan. I am here today to recognize Teacher Appreciation Week and to express my gratitude for the tireless work of our educators and administrators who are in the classrooms with our children 180-plus days of the year. The pandemic has had a significant impact on all of our students, and I commend the school staff for working hard to address their needs. Our school staff provide academic support, address mental health concerns, and they work hard to build relationships and community within their buildings. They are the ones on the ground every day, making sure our children are supported academically. They are the ones on the ground every day, making sure our children are supported academically, socially, and emotionally. I am also proud to acknowledge Ms. Hanau, who received the New Jersey Diversity in Education Award for her commitment to promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in Robert Gordon. Her leadership in this area is truly commendable and exactly the type of leadership we need in Roseville Park schools. However, supporting all of our students should be of the utmost importance to everyone involved in our school district. It is remarkable that the majority of the members of this Board of Education do not show the same caring and commitment to supporting our children. How come members of the Board of Education are calling social-emotional learning, SEL, indoctrination, instead of providing the schools with the support for SEL programs, which have been proven to improve academic outcomes for students and support overall well-being? Why haven't I heard a single solution from the Board of Education about improving the academics of our students? The priorities of this BOE are corrupt and self-serving. Many board members seem to be more concerned with taking over PTAs, trying not to renew a contract for one of our amazing principals, and discriminating online against LGBTQ and other minority students and staff. I want to know what you are doing for our students. Cindy Mago said that she, Jen McCarr, Constance Quintella, Lauren Harms, Lucy Figurito, and possibly Paul Biamonte are the only ones that are here for our children. So tell me, what have you, five and a half, done to support our children? The way the board has been operating so far this year, it is detrimental to our kids. Our students and staff deserve better. Let's start making the RP BOE about the students again. It's time to bring the conversations back to our students and about what you can do for them. Thank you.
Good evening. Edward Gay, Hamilton Place, Roseville Park. A beautiful night. I'm glad, uh, with my daughter recognition tonight, my middle school daughter. My job is well done. I fought, and I fought for good. A parent like me is really a proof to like, uh, involvement of parents is very important. Following up closely is very important. And I achieved my mission. It was very hard effort against everything. And finally, I won. We need more, uh, parents' involvement, you know? Like, it's not enough, uh, just to sell pretzels or, uh, read a book or, uh, just clean the classroom or make parties. Uh, parents must involve in the very process of education. Uh, P is not enough. Uh, the P is well-controlled by the T. Uh, we need more, uh, uh, parent committee or parent club so they get involved in the decisions, not they're just watch. Uh, for everybody, uh, supporting Ms. Hanau, uh, I appreciate that so much, you know, but I see Ms. Hanau didn't do well with me. And, uh, you can all read, uh, my emails. Uh, and, you know, I, I'm afraid if I open my mouth, you know, I can, I can get beat up tonight. Yeah. For the budget, you know, the budget now is approved, and, uh, the budget is huge. So, uh, we'd love to see, uh, great things on the floor. Good luck. Thank you.
Ms. Hanau won a, won an award on Friday. And I was disappointed to see a number of board members not attend that, uh, award ceremony. Ms. Hanau was awarded an honor bestowed to educators to, that see diversity and inclusion as a positive progressive idea. Ms. Hanau is on her way to ensure that Robert Gordon is a Blue Ruben School. For those of you who don't know what a Blue Ruben School is, it's a federally funded school program that celebrates school excellence uh, with turnaround stories and closing student achievement gaps. Each year, the New Jersey Department of Education nominates public schools that meet the eligibility requirements provided by the U.S. Department of Education, and nominated schools are invited to apply by the U.S. Department of Education. These things don't happen overnight. It takes both parent, teacher, and principal working hand in hand, year after year, to ensure the best results for all students, not just some. There are some school members on this, on this panel that have repeatedly targeted this principal, and we want answers. We want to know why. Which members ran the transparency and parents' voices, ran on transparency and parent voices and will continue to have secret meetings? They will use their, their majority to can, to continue to destroy the district from the inside out. This goes beyond political ideas. This is a deep-rooted extremism. Anti-LGBTQ and anti-immigrant sentiment expressed by some of our school members online and what we will get for the next three years. It's ugly, and as long as I have a voice, I will continue to speak out against it. The majority want to purge the district of everyone not welcomed by them. They do it with a lawyer who would gladly take a lawsuit. Uh, a lawyer who we still haven't seen. We still have the second-tier lawyer here today who Googles at the days. Today, today, they voted on a contract to spend a hundred and sixty-eight thousand hour for a lawyer who's not here. And yet, good educators are leaving Roseville Park or being denied contracts because they are not liked by friends and family of board members. The school board's job is to create policies for the district. They don't run the district. The district is run by the superintendent. The members of this board should learn the words arbitrary and capricious.
Uh, Lavender McCaffrey from Roseville Park. I know I'm, uh, like, not every, uh, board member's favorite right now, but, uh, for what it's worth, I mean, I loved working in all the schools that I got to work at in this district. Thought it was always a blast. I thought the kids are consistently just like hilarious and just wonderful to work with. But the only school that I felt completely safe working in was, uh, was Robert Gordon. And that was, that was because of Ms. Hanau. Hundred percent. By far, I felt the safest. I felt the most supported, just like immediately. Um, she's a fantastic listener, and, uh, she's open. And, um, you know, just, uh, the diversity training as of late in regards to how trans individuals were kind of met in the schools, it's, it's really not, uh, cutting the mustard. And, uh, Ms. Hanau is the type of person that influences diversity training. She's the type that informs it, that like understands it from the ground up. And, um, that's more important than any training we'll be able to provide. She's got my total support for what it's worth. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzie Biamonte, and I live in Roseville Park. There are two things I would like to talk about tonight. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Hickman, the STEM teacher from the middle school, received an Academic Educational Based Award of Union County Teacher of the Year. There were more than eighty nominees she was selected from. Ms. Coys sent out an email congratulating her and letting us know she will now be a candidate for State Teacher of the Year. What a standout accomplishment this is for one of our teachers who has been in district for many years and has done so many wonderful, positive things for our children. I did want to point out that I really do hope that it was an oversight, that she was not publicly, properly celebrated district-wide in front of family, friends, administrators, students, staff, and parents. This now leads me to congratulating Ms. Coys on her appointment to Superintendent of Roseville Park School District. Ms. Coys is a stand-up principal who is an educated leader and takes her job seriously. She's focused, determined, kind, responsible, confident, all while being humble. Ms. Coys is so easy to talk to and doesn't take any parent or student's concerns lightly. She takes time to listen and help make suggestions and works out solutions to any situation that comes up. Whether you send an email at ten A.M., Friday night at eleven, or Sunday afternoon, she responds right away. Ms. Coys wants what's best for all students and won't stop until she gets it done. I so look forward to July first, when she becomes our superintendent. The future of all Roseville Park schools is bright with her as our new strong leader. Thank you.
Good evening. Janine Goodis, uh, one-five-two Burrowan Street, Roseville Park. I'm here to question tonight what the board is doing. I understand that you have become politicized from hiring a new attorney who has represented the Republican Committee for the State in New Jersey and has worked with our most conservative outspoken board member to having many board members who are actually chairpeople of one political committee in our town. But of all the committees in our town, the Board of Education should be the least political. And yet, political ideology is the only reason that I can come up with, with why you would not extend the contract of the Robert Gordon principal. I understand that MAGA is a lifestyle that they are trying to spread far and wide, but you're not going to make any country great by removing great leaders because of their nationality. There's been a huge push in education for representation, for children to see people like themselves in power positions so that they can reach that particular goal. Robert Gordon has long been highly diverse. So to have a leader of Latina descent is amazing, and then to have one who is highly honored and regarded by her staff is a gift. Yet, the only reason that I can come up with that you're somehow building a case against her is because you don't respect her cultural diversity. I've spoken to many parents about this principle, and ironically, the only ones who have complaints are white. Now, I'm sure you'll make every excuse as it had something to do with a student, and you couldn't possibly disclose your reasons for privacy. But I can tell you, I remember when the former principal of that school was removed, and everybody knew what was going on, but he kept his job. When you're voting for her contract, remember, you need to look into your conscience. I will be sure to spread my opinion on why you've made this choice. If you cannot articulate the real reasons as to why someone you're not hiring, someone you, why you're not hiring someone so qualified, I've been attending these meetings for far too long and have always been able to figure out the agenda, and as much as I've tried to avoid this, it's the only reason I can come up with. I'm very saddened that this is where we are, and I hope you'll think before you vote. Thank you.
At this time, I will close the public portion. Um, if there's nothing for close, just a reminder that our next meeting is on June sixth at six P.M. starts. Um, anybody has anything?
President Harms, I have a question. On Tuesday, June sixth, the school district is closed. Are we still going to have our board meeting that night?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. High school. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone drive home safe and have a good night. Thank you.